So, can you, if you would please, turn your microphone on? Time being six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order, please rise to the Fledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united at heart, with liberty as our first principle.
Roll call, please. Joe?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Don?
Here.
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 Here. All right. Item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
I have no. I have not.
Commissioner Swenson?
Uh, please leave my options open like I have the best. Thank you.
I do not. Item number four is approval of agenda. There has been a request to remove item nineteen and twenty-one. Those are both flats or crest view. So we do need to remove items nineteen and twenty-one. Are there any other corrections?
Move approval of the agenda.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve the amended agenda for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Amended agenda has been approved. Uh, now is the time for public comments. Anyone here to make a public comment? I know Commissioner Swenson signed him. Joe, is there any, are there any other signatures on there?
There isn't.
Okay. Commissioner Swenson, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, here is Swenson, Yankton Commissioner. Here is Swenson, Yankton Commissioner. This is a picture of Mike Papick. Somebody you may know him. He and I share the same uncle. Our uncle was the police chief in Wagner, South Dakota for decades. My dad's sister married Joe Papick. Anyway, uh, Mike just recently died. Uh, his funeral service was Saturday, the eighteenth. Uh, we had the parking lot, we couldn't go into church. And, uh, he just recently got out of the hospital. He survived the COVID-19 virus. And, um, somewhere quick to say that he died from COVID-19, but... Mike was over at my house last year. He purchased a new year's pickup, but I gave him some wheel weights for his tractor. He said then that, he said, you know, that I'm looking for a kidney transplant. And I said, yeah. I said, a lot of people know it. And he says, I got to go through dialysis twice a week. That was a quote from Mike. And so when he survived from the virus nineteen, I, uh, I thought, man, I know he sent me a message and said, boy, this nineteen's really taken a toll on me. But he made it, but like I said, it's somewhere quick to say that he died of this complication, but, uh, Mike had other problems. So, but you remember Mike Papick? Life long citizen of Yankton County. His mom and dad, Roy Papick. Just don't forget Mike Papick and, uh... He's probably a hell of a right now, as far as I know. Well, anyway, thank you so much and remember Mike Papick. Thank you.
Would anyone else care to make a public comment at this time?
Uh, I'm not sure, man. I don't want to make a public comment, but, um, I just, I do want to mention a friend of mine, former county commissioner, Mr. Ted Nicholson. He did, uh, pass away a few weeks ago. He was the former county commissioner and community leader. I just hope to keep Mr. Nicholson's family, if you can remember, just because he was, uh, in our shoes, uh, quite a few years ago. But, uh, he's kind of honored and somebody that we definitely, uh...
At this time, public comment is closed. Uh, moving on to item number five. Approval of minutes from the July seventh, 2020 budget meeting. Are there any corrections to the July seventh budget meeting?
I'm sure, man, I move approval of the minutes, July seventh budget meeting. Sorry.
I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes for the budget meeting on July seventh for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. We will now, uh, review the July seventh regular meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
Move approval.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second to approve the July seventh regular meeting minutes as submitted for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Minutes are approved.
I didn't have one, one question. We, we did have, uh, that entry application for this meeting. I don't see it on, that's a mistake. So what's, what's the status?
He's got it out of town. He told me to answer my question. He told me to leave it up. Pardon me for that. I just wanted some questions. Thank you.
I have a number six, we will start with claims. Are there any questions on the claims?
On page thirty-two, the eight hundred dollars for an U.P., what, what is that?
That's for the, um, safety center, the bond. We think that for the, we think that a reason.
Move approval of the claims.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the claims as submitted for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Claims are approved. Next, we'll take the auditor treasure and cooled cash reports.
Move approval of the auditor, uh, treasure and cooled cash reports.
I have a motion in a second to approve the reports as submitted for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Reports are approved. Uh, mental illness hearing quarterly report.
Move approval of Gary's report. Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the mental illness quarterly report for the discussion.
This is the amount that the county is paying us to be...
Or...
The B.E. bill.
Is that, is this actually the dollar amount they owe or what they...
This is just from their hearings?
Okay.
Further comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Reports approved. We have a budgeted cash transfer.
This is just a budgeted cash, cash transfer from general fund into emergency management?
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the transfer from the general fund to the emergency management fund. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. And we have a conflict of interest policy to review. Are there any questions on the conflict of interest document?
What is this for?
It's your, that, this is three, and it's basically for grants, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah. And how, you know, yeah.
Is this the first time we've had something like this or...
It's been a long, um, I don't think I've ever done, I think this is just amendment to it, and I'm not...
Because, you know, I, I think that's a lot of good things here, but, you know, there are other steps. You know, the county must take all necessary permanent steps to assure that minority businesses, women's business enterprises, and labor supplies, and every firm, so each one possible. To, you know, I think that's a good thing, but how do we, how do we, what are all necessary steps? Is my question.
This is just, my understanding is this is just replay, this is updating what's currently, um, what needs to kind of currently have. I asked Patty Kennedy the same question earlier about comparing. This is what District Three said would match up with current statute. So this is, this is from District Three and their recommendation.
And I think that's why there's amendment is because the laws have changed.
Is this going to change the requirements that we have to do to be in compliance with it? Yes, I guess, you know, my question is, yeah, but it says pretty vague on taking all necessary steps. And I thought there was something here about certain enterprises have to be on a solicitation list. I just wanted to check we got this, that we're, I thought we're following it. Because we will have to maybe change our way to do business slightly to be in compliance.
I think what I, again, short of comparing it to the current one, I think when it says the proposed activity is completed in accordance with the dead laws of the state of South Dakota, which is under, um, three, um, District Three would be aware of what procedures and what is, obviously, have gotten misinformation from the city to make sure that the county is in compliance.
So, uh, along with the previous question, uh, under, you know, bids, are we giving, uh, all bidders a written response? On a timely basis?
I believe so. Mike, yes. Any questions?
And then to Devon, uh, is this something that we have to adopt? I mean, is this a requirement for, for grants and we pretty much don't have a choice? So currently, we...
But is it...
Okay. So if we, if we want grants, we have to accept this and... So, Devon, we don't really have a choice then.
Well, you know, it's, again, in connection with what you're saying, Saturday, the county's got to do a list that requires, which in terms of participation by small, with minority businesses and women's business enterprises. We have a list of women enterprises that we need to, of minority enterprises.
Now, I think that would be a question for District Three to guide that, but I'm sure that all stems from federal law that I doubt is in South Dakota law. Um, but if we are looking to solicit any kind of federal grant, and you know, the emergency management team obtains numerous federal grants, and we are required to do all the paperwork associated with that. Um, so I do believe that would be something to push back by District Three to guide us in that process.
I'd have to agree with you, Sharon. I don't think we have a choice but to approve it. I just wanted to be sure, you know, we're in compliance or, I wonder if we're... There are a lot of other businesses that we have to solicit every time we do a bid. I guess that's what we need to do. Would something such as a notification be required, you know, should we notify? I, bidders that...
Well, uh, it's in the bid. I, I mean, it's, it's published in the papers. You know, we're, we're letting other entities know that we are requesting this bid.
What says it under ten-eight placing qualified small and minority businesses and women's business enterprises on solicitation list? Does that mean that, you know, we notify them every time that we are doing a bid?
That means we need to, we have a list.
Exactly, and maybe, maybe something to be effective. We have something in the paper, if you're a, uh, minority or small business, contact us and we put you on the list. If we tend to have something, we send it to them. I don't know if that would...
Yeah, I, I do believe Mike went through that, that, um, type of a process where, where folks didn't see the noise and the fever and didn't feel it was fair, and how he proactively contacts them many times when we go out for bid on things, so...
Yeah.
Further questions?
Well, uh, under eleven B, uh, it talks about different levels. It says, uh, you're, you're over, uh, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. You sort of think, quote, quote, quotations from, uh, three qualified sources are documented efforts, there are two, uh, most powerful South Dakota, there's law as referenced in item one, which every one should... Mike, do we, do we always get three? Something to do? And if we don't, do we, do we document? Why, why, why we're making our decision?
I guess we don't always get three, no. Um, we advertise it and whoever responds, responds. I guess that's typically when you're, when you're presenting a bid, though, you make notes that we only received one bid or we only received two bids.
And the motion states that we receive three, yeah, one bid, two bids.
Yeah, I guess, the documented effort would be that, you know, was published and I only received one bid. Would something like that work in the, okay. That's a good point, but, uh...
We got, it says, publish it, uh, in the, after...
No, that would be...
In the legal system. How long is this, this, if I were to compare, parallel this, compare? This says you gotta have documented. I think we gave everybody here, all this documented, Mike, Wade, and, you know, see, we started on that. Right? And I think, uh, yeah, it's your flat, Jack, because there was only one, only one day received.
Further discussion?
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Yankton County Subcode of Procurement and Conflict of Interest Policy for District Three. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. That takes care of item number six. We are now at item number seven, a right-of-way.
It's a right-of-way app for, uh, quarry construction. Well, not part trail, which is seventy-five-two, a part trail, that's where the old town, which paid shop was, uh, just north there. Existing water line is on the side of the road. And, uh... It's just the area that we have that, uh, blink from flooding, that green, the light, maybe a year ago. Was it on part trail, was it right there? You talking about over some of the driveway? Yes. That's a few years ago, I know. That would have been like that, Brian, it's here. I remember something about that. That would be that place, just, first place, uh, going north of Houston, two hundred and fifty, side, right? This one, that, that, you know? This would be just over the, just about over the hill. There a service there, or any of those places? There is one. No, service to this place right now. In case, two-inch oil line.
Is that, is that supply line going to be solely for that residence? Or is that through supply other places?
What the board underneath the road is specific for that place.
Move approval of the right-of-way application. Back it up.
I have a motion and a second to approve the right-of-way application for the quarry construction expedient. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is key grant applications for Jim River Bridges.
I guess what's, uh, tomorrow after tonight is looking for approval. The deadline for, uh, to apply for the P.E. grants is August first. We had, uh, some discussion with, uh, uh, the DOT, the, about this, uh, I guess what they would like. It's in the rules here. It's got brought to our attention, uh, all bridges must be evaluated for potential rehab prior to any consideration for replacement. The condition, age, structure type, scour, critically, critical teeth, and potential preservation or rehab alternative shall be... Anyways, uh, they want us to look at rehabbing these bridges before we put in for P.E., uh, or replacement. So therefore, uh, I don't think we should apply for the P.E.'s on, at least, Johnson and Jamesville. We should look into rehab on that. I still believe we should go through and apply for a P.E. grant. Fleets, please. Fleet is narrow, uh, there's, right there, it says, uh, mentions a scour. We don't know what that, uh, the bridge, the closing issue was, so...
We already got the key interest in church.
The old church, we already have, we're in the process of completing that.
Does that have to be in the, this first deal?
No, that one is not, we just started that.
We did that one last year.
Right. Uh...
Have we heard anything back? I mean, I know we got it, but, you know, one day, but, is that... It's a replacement, not a rehab on that, that's what it's due.
Right now, that is a good question. But anyways, uh, the main thing is, is these P.E. grants will cost a colony roughly fifteen to twenty thousand a piece. I say we put that fifteen to twenty thousand towards fleets for sure, because we know there's issues there. It's got a good chance at getting replaced. Adam and I talked, we believe that that would be the case of that one. But Jamesville and Johnson, there's a possibility to rehab. So, we'll have to, still process to have that evaluated. But one way to look at it is, it's kind of a scary deal. One way to look at it would be, uh, spend fifteen to twenty thousand on P.E. grant, you know, prove it with replacements. So we just threw that money away, or we could spend about fifteen hundred to evaluate it, tell us if it could be rehabbed. For rehab, say, for instance, it cost fifteen hundred or a million and five to rehab it, bring it up to current load ratings. The county would, roughly, have to pay about three hundred thousand instead of eighteen hundred to a million for replacement, you know? The only thing that worries me is longevity. How long it's supposed to last when you rehab it. A lot of things to think about. I guess, right now, our goal should be go after replacing some church fleets. And look at the possibilities of rehabbing, can't, Johnson and Jamesville.
This, this has got to be decided before all these persons, is that correct? What was that, what was the, uh, it was a fifteen hundred dollar evaluation?
For the fifteen hundred, hundred dollar, I'm gonna, uh, for them to evaluate it, to see what I would pay to bring it up to current load rating.
Is, everybody else could be done? You, you know, this is what I, I hate, is we, we go down that road, we spend fifteen hundred dollars, we decide that, yeah, we, well, they need to be replaced, and we were, and you were behind. Is there any way those could be, the only way we did before?
I don't know if you guys could...
I mean, in... Or if you come down to the... Because I am, I should have...
Kind of slow, even by considering, um, I think we couldn't have it done, but obviously, for all three. But do you have any, I mean, we have to approve the resolution.
I guess, I, I'm just speaking for myself and not, not to risk the board, but, I don't know, I feel if, if we do this evaluation and, and, you know, my concern, Jamesville, Jamesville and Johnson Ridge have had major repairs within the last couple of years. Ma- major, I mean, I thought we were gonna lose Jamesville Bridge, uh, funding Johnson Ridge before that, and if it comes back, where, yeah, they need to be replaced, we lost a whole year, now we gotta wait. And if we, if you could get it done before, you know, in the next week, if we could, you know, call a special meeting or something to do the resolution, I guess I, I would rather, if, if it's got to be replaced, I'd rather have the P.E. all done together. That's just my opinion, instead of waiting.
Mike, I want to keep, like, uh, say, first, which, you want... Yeah, I guess they, uh, were pretty much, they want us to push for rehabs on a lot of these, uh... The reasoning is, is they're thinking we need to get us a fifty years extra out of these bridges. I don't know, if you're talking a bridge that's sixty years old already, that they've been through, uh, that's the only thing that worries me, I guess. It's a big decision to make, but, you know, it's like, it had something like, um, picking up, up here by the axle bridge. And I remember, uh, it was built, and I remember the old bridge, one of those steel curations over the top. And when that bridge was, is currently there, was replaced, that was put in. The whole road was raised up because that old bridge was always submerged. Well, when that road was raised up, for a lot of years, there was no problem. Now, of course, these later years, we've never had water this high, and that bridge has been submerged on, on the other one. So, it's kind of like, my analogy would be like...
My analogy would be like a car that's got its tires in the water versus a car that's. Submerged completely for like the time which wasn't weeks or months, uh. Uh, it's, it's gotta do some kind of damage or loosen up the earth, uh, and like Dan said. I, you can only rebuild a car so many times.
And I understand that too, but. When the D O T threw this at me about. So again, all bridges must be evaluated for potential rehab prior to any consideration for replacement. I just don't want us to waste a bunch of money.
Okay, so later in that paragraph, what they say is. When the rehabilitation costs are estimated at sixty percent or more of the replacement cost. Then replacement may be justified.
Right.
So essentially what they're looking at.
That's huge.
You've got a bridge and you can spend a million bucks to get it twenty years. And to replace it is three or four million, you have to spend a million bucks. They won't approve you for a big grant to replace it if the state engineer thinks. It can be fixed. And we are, you looked at Stone Church after your last meeting. And right now, the state engineer thinks Stone Church Bridge can be fixed. It does not meet the sixty percent threshold to replace that bridge. So my standing here trying to be proactive, thinking. Well, if the state's gonna take that narrow view of our other three bridges, where do we get the biggest thing for our dollars? To try and get, we got four and we get the state to do two. And I think that's what he's before us today, is trying to get us to see that logic.
I look at the three hundred thousand that would cost to rehab one, well, that's the cost of. One of our small ones, we would have to. Set so much money aside every year for these replacements. It would, it would be doable, so. And I'm not, and I'm not saying I'm a hundred percent for rehabbing and stuff, but. When, when these rules are thrown at us. When you, you're, you're backed up against, you're pushed into a corner.
And the people making the decisions are the ones bringing up the rules.
And we don't know for sure right now, yes, if Stone Church. It might not be, you know, we might not be able to rehab it. That, that was our biggest concern was. The only way we want to rehab these bridges is if they can be. Back to legal.
Yeah, I mean, not as bad issue, but Stone Church Bridge is. And that one, we're struggling with that one, you know, that one's a struggle. What, what is your, uh, any of these bridges pretty well right now?
I, I think, uh, the chances for Johnson and Jamesville are good. One thing that the state, uh, engineer did not say out outside. He said, extend the life by fifty years, what is that fifty years without waiting? How, how long is that fifty years, is it gonna be posted? I just said extend the life of fifty, better than one. But what are the requirements of the, of this evaluation? If you, if you make the evaluation, we determine that. Rehab costs are gonna exceed sixty percent. State has to do their own evaluation or they, they have to sign off on our evaluation. They have to do a quick check. And it's one thing I wanted to circle back with you. When I say we can get the evaluation done, we still gotta go through the D O T for approval. A lot of people are saying, yes, we can get it done when the D O T is involved. I wanna make.
We gotta say.
So make it clear. You feel fleets will be that sixty percent. I feel. As if, when they say the condition age, structure, scour, all that stuff. The state engineer out there said if there's poor alignment, if the bridge is too narrow. Something other than that, they'll make an exception. We all know fleet, narrow bridge, I mean, two seven hundred feet down there, it's scary. I think we just bring up the scour, from the scour. So I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Would you recommend that we. From what I understand, you recommend just going for two, right? Well, we already have the one, okay, we got Stone Church, but would you recommend going for two more or just Stone Church and? Fleets? What's your question?
I, I think. Fleets would be our next, we already have P E grant for Stone Church, we're in the process on that. We need to, I'd be allowing to go for fleets second.
Does it do require? Yeah, it's the first time they're forcing. Outside of the enforcement issue, that's a great enough requirement, I guess, my first question is. Wouldn't that be your first step and recommend we can replace. Evaluation first. And say. We can rehab, that's what we want to be, here's the timeframe, here will be the projected cost versus. What a full replacement of that, yeah. Usually. Usually on the county side, it's very good replacement. Most counties, we don't even look at rehab because of the concerns that we're, we're talking about, are we actually gonna give those to the year?
And over my standpoint, I wouldn't look at rehab. I'm assuming that those. Discussions we're all at, I believe we've talked somewhat about. One, two, three, six, and we're gonna have to.
Was some of that done when, you know, like Stone Church Bridge had a. A big grant and, uh, was it Johnson that had a big dream as well? And Jamesville, you know, was any of that, was it, was it just? That, or was, was the evaluation done at that point? When they got the bridge and could replace prior to that? Was that part of the rehab or?
No, the, the preservation.
So there was no evaluation for rehab, it's just.
Okay, so we went on the path, what happens if we approve this, uh, you make the recommendation for fleets. As a replacement, the state said, no. Will all that happen by August first, you deal with it? So I'm assuming that. I think I can. I should be able to get the D O T nod in their head that fleet is eligible for replacement due to the poor alignment and narrowness. That's gonna work by August first. I would rather have that, the commissioners. Approve the resolution, we'll apply for fleets and then. If I can't get the D O T nod in their heads by August first, um, the county decided not to submit.
So if we, if you, if you don't have a. You know, I guess a good feeling from the state by August first, and we don't submit it and then we don't pay the fifteen thousand, is that, is that correct? Missed us.
I mean, originally we're looking at, at all these P E up. Federal, I'll be. So what's the good? I guess I'm asking everybody who is commissioners, were the, were the thought process in going forward with the fleet one? To be at least those two available when we get up to these, that's what we're basically.
Yeah, yeah. And I have no idea how those grants are gonna be written, how we can apply for them, if you can. Tap on two more bridges while you're at it, I have no idea. Um, the thought process from the state at that time was, the better prepared we are for those when they come out, because usually they have a. Four to six week deadline, grant coming out, here's your deadline. Um, the better, better your chances. But I'm in mind on this one, I mean, if, if the state's gonna drag their feet. And if we go through the efforts knowing full well that they are not looking highly upon two of our bridges being replaced. It seems for not to do that. I do think we need, need to do the evaluation for what it costs to, uh, fix them. So they are fully lower rated. And if that's gonna be sixty, seventy percent of a replacement, then we're sitting in a better position. If it's twenty, forty percent. We're not sitting in a good position.
Now, if it doesn't get us the full rate of that, I would see.
Oh, surely you're saying spend fifteen hundred on Jamesville and Johnson or this evaluation?
Yeah, and that would be Mike's authority, he can have that though.
I don't know, she would, and how long is that, we did an evaluation, how long is that before? Would it be good for next year too, or is it? So if we spend that fifteen hundred dollars, it's gonna be good for a while?
Far, far any. For major deterioration to the bridge with government.
Stop all flooding for a while. I think that's a good way to go, uh. I did like the idea of having. Preliminary engineering on all four of those, you know, for. Possible federal grant, but it just doesn't seem like that's gonna work out.
Yeah, and right now we're in the midst of COVID, and they've spent a huge amount of money with that effort.
I think two, two is, two is better than one, which is better than obviously. And so we depend on it, but. We, we're not gonna do the fifteen hundred dollars evaluation for fleets, we're just gonna go straight into the application effect.
Oh, uh, Senator, you go to the D O T. Expressing my thoughts on the leaving wire and, uh, one good question.
Would we have to approve the fleet's bridge application tonight and then? We could, could we give Mike the authority that he could devote it before August first if he? You know, if, the end of July, you get something back from the state and said, we're not getting accepted. And there's no sense in moving it forward, if we give Mike the authority to rescind that. Spend fifteen thousand dollars.
Maybe we probably wouldn't. Mike, given Mike the authority to send it through. Throw it in the dirt.
You just don't have that. That's why.
I can let you guys know, it was written that. Who's writing that?
Well, that being said, are there any other questions before we, uh, it sounds like entertain a motion to approve a P E grant application for fleets only?
Just want to reiterate again. And sixty years ago, uh, when the Johnson Bridge was replaced, the road was raised. Considerably, like I said, took care of it for a lot of years and it could still be used when flooded. No matter if we get the grant, if we approve it, if they approve it, if. Somebody gives a donation, a building, we still have to take into consideration that road's gonna have to be raised up. We're gonna talk that, okay, there's so much that you've forgotten, because. When a new bridge ends, floods, you can't drive over it because it's flooded. Still gonna do damage to it, so just don't forget about that part. Thank you, Mike, thanks for fixing those holes in the river system. Please, you're happy.
Mike, uh, one question. I see you've been estimating engineering costs. I think there's three up there. Maybe seventy three, seventy eight dollars. Which is, what, two eighty thousand? Two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. On the, uh, on the, the Florida engineering? Yes, yeah. Is that? Require us to change their bidding on that?
I believe, we have chosen Clark because they're on the state's list. We chose them as our engineers, so we don't have to get projects like this. At the beginning of the.
I think that would be. I'll take that. But you were clear with.
You know, but would it be, this is an engineering service of which we have chosen them to be our engineer, it's no different than when we approved a gravel bid. And we're buying gravel for twelve months from certain people. Well, the state puts out bids for engineers and we're allowed to choose, is that correct?
So. The resolution that we passed that shows our engineers know.
That was solely for what?
Bridge and structure.
Hey.
Oh, you heard it. Pretty sure engineering services are exactly. From those bidding laws that you're assisted.
Yeah, they're on those.
Make sure engineering services do not apply.
Yeah. They're under a certain amount.
There are, there are all of the sets. There are only like seven approved. Engineering firms for the bridges. For this network, but I, I, since when we approved them, I'm pretty excited by. On these projects that I still wanted to see this. I would still like to, um, for these P E's, I'm okay. For myself, but for, we get into big projects, I would love to see this, so. From firms and so. All, all I, all I've thought it up for is I didn't want us to sign, or maybe this later, we'd be if they call, I want to decide. I get it, that way.
So at this point, if we go ahead and approve this. Then would you look in and see if we're making an error? And if we are. Then we have to backtrack and we're gonna miss the deadline.
We'd have to kind of have a special meeting.
Well, you can't, but you're gonna miss the deadline, because if we have to advertise, you have to advertise for so many times my paper and you have to have the bid opening and then.
Am I understanding correctly, Ron? Part of the P E application, I mean, I can't, I, you're, we're waiting for the track. After the application at all.
So you're saying that if we're not paying for the application. Would it necessarily apply until we get the grant?
Yeah, so the, the cost assessment that is passed that, that's such a grand amount. When, if you receive the grant, you will send a form or something where you could select somebody up. That, that B that is attached in there, or our cost assessment sets the range. Those is not a binding thing where you have to hire us if you get, to get the grant.
I'm not sure you, I, it's not a question of whether we hire you or somebody else, it's a question of, did we violate? What they did to you.
I guess so.
Well, I think that, I think Deb's point is, the. To approve this application would not violate that in any way, shape or form, would we get to, uh, if we're awarded. Look to hire somebody for that P E study. We're not gonna spend this money, then that's where that would probably come in.
Would you agree with that, Deb, and what's your thought on?
Yeah, and I'm also looking, um. I know Rob would use this as well, but I'm looking at the statute of fixate. For the exempt ones, and it's any highway construction contract imminent to or the part of transportation. Uh, any contract for purchasing supplies from the United States. I think he was saying he believes engineering is probably one of the exemptions underneath that, or part of the statute.
So you feel where it would be okay approving the application?
Yeah.
That, that's what that says, what we just said.
No, but this is, it says. As amended, the purchasing agency shall advertise for biz or proposals with the exception of exempt items. as amended, the purchasing agency shall advertise for bids or proposals with the exception of exempt items. So under two, if they're in statute five dash eighty-eight dash twenty-two, they are exempt and so that, that provision doesn't apply to that. And that's, I think, within the same, he believes engineering services would follow.
Thank you. I just. Are you ready for a motion, Charlie?
Yes.
I guess I would make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one application for bridge improvement plan. For engineering bodies for Fleets Bridge.
All right.
I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary engineering drive for Fleets Bridge. Further discussion.
Do we also need, would we need a separate motion to allow the analysis of the alternative bridges for the fifteen hundred dollars each?
That would be under my authority. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Are you good?
Yep.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number nine is the nurse quarterly report. Welcome.
So did everybody get a copy of the report?
Yes. You still fairly busy with COVID?
Yeah. I have mine too. Two days of weeks to regular services, I guess, to help with. There's something, or anything may fall. Another exceptions to the board coming in that's common.
Do you make a count with that outside?
Oh, well, I guess, you know, we find it's a lot of people.
You have any concern to a school coming?
First kind of way to see what's gonna happen. We will be working with the government to streaming. Council on it, I'll have the vaccine.
It's only about four weeks away. I know school supplies are out in stores, so that's always at hand.
And so, so I'm sure I understand the report. The review over this assessment, you have to hand it in, and then it's into the basket if you had the credit.
Or, oh, those, and the, those are the last part of the parts.
No, actually.
So that you guys can find that somewhere.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I appreciate what you do.
Thank you, thank you. Move forward very hard.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the nurses quarterly report. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries, report's approved. Next up, city of Yankton budget request.
Hi, everybody. Can you guys hear me okay?
Ms. McKitty, thanks for joining.
Yeah, thanks for having us and for allowing this type of communication. It is that time of year where we come to the county and talk about the contributions that the county makes to some of the public services that we provide together. Patty, did the county commissioners receive the letter that I sent to you?
Yes, they did.
Awesome. Well, I have to tell you, we had an addition error. And so when you look at that twenty twenty-one proposed column, all the amounts are right in the various categories. But that does not add up to two thirty-five, six ninety-nine. That adds up to two thirty-eight, eight fifty-one. So I just wanted to make that clear. I went to school in Minnesota, so you can make whatever jokes you wanna make, but it adds up to two thirty-eight, eight fifty-one. I have some people with me, if you wanna hear specific information about the various entities. I have representation here from our dispatch center, Dwayne Johnson is here. I also have Dana Schmidt from the Yankton Community Library. And Dave Mingo is working on logging in. He's having some technical difficulties, it sounds like, but he works with the senior center as well as the Changarney Airport. So I'll try to cover any questions that you might have with those entities unless he is able to log on. So I won't take a lot of your time. I know you have a big agenda tonight. I just wanted to visit again, since I only talk to you once a year about this, that this is not like an outside agency request, like the Boys and Girls Club or Pathways or something like that. These are public services and in some cases, we have a contract together, an agreement for the services we provide to the public. So I just wanted to bring that forward. The Senior Citizen Center, this year's request for twenty twenty-one is forty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Just to get you up to speed, in twenty twenty, we had to replace a HVAC rooftop unit. So that was something that just was beyond its past, its life, so we had to get that replaced. In twenty twenty-one, we have an alarm system. We have for primary security as well as fire. So we do have a few different fire alarm systems, but they are not what we need to have in that building. Also, we don't have any of the types of alarms which flash. So if somebody is hard of hearing or something like this, we don't have fire alarm systems operating. You know, that building was built in nineteen seventy-four. I don't know what you guys were doing in nineteen seventy-four, but my dad was still in the service. So I wasn't even a glimmer in his eye at that point. So it needs some upgrades as any building that age would, would require. So we're asking for, for that amount. Changarney Airport, this year, we're asking again for a contribution of fifteen thousand. That's the same contribution that we ask every year. We asked for that last year and ten thousand was approved. Patty and Al Berak, our finance officer, are working through some accounting there with this year's, twenty twenties contribution, but we are asking for the fifteen again to help offset the expense of running that, the airport for our county. The dispatch center, you all know that we utilize E nine one one funds for the dispatch center. And we are almost done with our radio project and we're, we'll be shortly drawing down on that four hundred thousand dollars that we are utilizing for the radio councils. This year, we're asking for the contribution of a hundred and fifty-two, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. And then, of course, the Yankton Community Library, we're requesting twenty-four thousand for that facility. Last, last year, you approved fifteen thousand. We have changed our fee structure for county residents. I don't have a lot to tell you about that because we just got into that fee structure and started educating the public about that and then COVID nineteen hit us and we didn't have as much traffic as we would have hoped countywide, city residents or county residents at large. So we can definitely talk in more detail. I've got many, a couple of the department heads here if you'd like. But that adds up to two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one. And I'm happy to stand for any questions, Madam Chair.
Any other questions for the city team?
How many non-Yankton residents use the library?
I'm gonna let Dana Schmidt, our library director, hop on and I'll let her give you that answer.
Hi, everyone. Seems like long time no see, but I am back. So I did pull stats and last year in June, we had one thousand twenty-seven county residents that were cardholders. And this year in June, we had nine hundred thirty-six. So it did drop by about a hundred. And it's just, it is hard to tell maybe what that is directly related to because of COVID. It's hard to say that that was because of the price increase of the card going up, but it is about a hundred and drop there. What we received from the county this year was about two percent of our total budget. But the amount of checkouts that we did, county residents made up about twenty percent of checkout. So if that kinda gives you some idea of the usage of that, those nine hundred cardholders, it's about twenty percent of what we're checking out, so.
Okay, my question, my, my question is, and if my math is right, you have, we, we reduced it by nine thousand dollars. And the people that pay for that service pay fifty dollars more. So that's six hundred people to cover the, the cost of our reduction. So it looks to me like they're actually paying more than the reduction.
Um, I guess I, I, I didn't. Right. Nine hundred people, so, and that's our, that's our active cards right now. So yes, we did raise our annual fee from five dollars a year to twenty dollars a year. Sorry, my brain's not working with math right now and I did not go to school in Minnesota either, but yeah, it's, what we were asking for with the twenty-four thousand and the number of people we had for county residents paying five dollars a year, we were still kinda falling short of where we should be with the county contribution and then what county residents were paying. So I think this kinda helped fill the gap a little bit, but.
It seems like it's gonna increase the gap.
The cost of the card, you mean?
You have nine hundred and some people that currently pay under twenty dollars. And if you reduce it by fifteen dollars, six hundred people are gonna take it, then that makes up the, six hundred people will make up the nine thousand dollars.
We, so if they're outside of Yankton County, they're paying forty dollars a year for the card. So county residents are still paying about half of what we would consider a card to be worth.
Dana, what do people from Nebraska, what do they pay for their library?
They pay forty dollars a year. So any, anyone outside of Yankton County is forty dollars a year. If they're inside Yankton County but outside of city limits, it's, we're, it's twenty dollars a year. So county residents are still getting a reduced rate, if you will, for their library card because of the county contribution.
How many of those people pay forty dollars?
So right now, we have two hundred twenty-three cardholders that are paying forty dollars a year. That are.
What you have last year?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you remember how many you had last year that paid the forty dollars?
Um, we had three hundred thirty-eight last year that paid forty and two hundred twenty-three this year so far.
Some of those discussions, Dana, that we had last year. If you value it at forty dollars and there's nine hundred thirty-six county employees, that's twenty dollars plus the fifteen thousand. That the county chips in, if you divide that out, get back to where it's at. So Yankton County residents with county and private pay, pay with thirty-six dollars. A library card where I was county resident, they would. That makes sense, Dana.
I couldn't, I couldn't hear it completely, but.
If you take the total number of county residents paying at twenty dollars plus the fifteen thousand from the county, it ends up being about thirty-six dollars per, per card holder. That the library is per user.
I'm using the nine hundred and seventy.
I use nine hundred thirty-six.
Yeah, subtract out the forty dollars a year.
Is that the forty dollar payers of the out of county?
Yeah, so we don't, we don't fund them. So if you look at the county users, it's seven hundred thirteen.
I think, I think she says the county cardholders are nine hundred thirty-six people for twenty twenty. And then the out of county is two hundred and twenty-three. Those would be people in Nebraska or other counties that I understand.
That's right.
You had to subtract the two hundred of the nine hundred. Gotcha. Yeah.
So anyway, just to get, you know, what, what those numbers equate to. I think. But to your point, I think right now that we're getting closer to the forty dollars than we were previous. If that's what's valued at forty dollars.
Yes.
I think, yeah. The library is gonna come up short. By continuing on with the proposal. Versus us paying one four thousand. That's our research.
Any questions on the other, on the airport, on the senior center?
I guess I got a question on the senior center, is, do we have a bid for the alarm system or is that just an estimate at this point?
Dave Mingo is now on, so I'll have him hop on and he can talk to you a little bit about the center.
Yeah, sorry about that. My, my iPad at home didn't like Zoom, so I ran down to the office, cooked, my apologies. That is an estimate for that alarm system at the center. That is an estimate for that alarm system at the center. So we're very hopeful that, much like this year with the rooftop unit, that the actual proposal will come in lower than our estimate. We always try and do estimates conservatively. So, you know, we're hopeful that it comes in less than that. I think you were forwarded some information about that alarm system and the current situation we have there with the alarm system original from 1974. So if you want me to expand on that discussion, I sure can, but.
Is it, is it, it's both a security system and a fire system, is that?
So it is, it is not security. It's, it's, it's fire and heat. And the issue is, is we have a number of shortcomings with the system that's there now from 1974. One of them being it, the current system isn't expanded into the new areas. It also doesn't have certain notification, remote notification capabilities that most current alarm systems have. In other words, the only way the alarm goes off or the only people that hear the alarm are, are the people in the building. It doesn't notify anybody remotely. So if there's an after-hours incident, we, we don't have any idea what's going on until somebody calls the fire department because there's smoke coming out of the roof. And then there's some issues without having sensors in the hood in the kitchen, which is current standard for, you know, for anywhere where there's a commercial kitchen occupancy like that. So, you know, it's a, it's a pretty big expenditure. We're hopeful that the actual proposal next year, when we get around to taking quotes on it, comes in less than that. But, you know, it's just, it's an old system that only serves about half the building. The other thing it doesn't have is it doesn't have accessibility capability. So it just has the tone. So if somebody is hearing impaired, it doesn't have the strobe with it, which is important in certain populations to have the strobe with the tone.
Is that going to be a similar system? I know the library is looking at a new fire system as well. Are there going to be similar systems for over the senior center? Can I have something specific for its population?
I don't know that we've gotten far enough along with our discussion with Dana to know exactly what type of system that, that they're going to require. I imagine they'll need more of a security, potentially panic alarm sort of situation in their, in their operations. We can talk to Executive Director Christie about that a little bit too when we get further along in the planning. You know, it's just an initial estimate for next year's budget at this point. Yep. Anything I can ask or help you with the airport on?
Doesn't sound like it.
Okay.
Any other questions for the city team? All right. We thank you for joining.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Enjoy your evening while it's still cool. All right, that was item number 10. Next slide, item number 11, the center update, Kristi Howard.
Good evening. Thank you for having me today. I just wanted to first thank you so very much for funding our air conditioner, which is working through rates. We have some people in the building who are benefiting from it. But as you probably already know, our building is still closed due to COVID. The fact that we're serving a very important market that is uprooted through health issues. I thought that we would have the opportunity to get a lot of things done since the building's been closed for 18 weeks. But we haven't got many of our wish list items done. But the one thing that we have gotten done, and I'm extremely proud of, and I told Scott Cousteau, I said, I need to get this to the radio station. Your perfect newspaper, because I'm announcing it first on the radio station. And that's the fact that we have nearly served the number of meals of the population of our community through this pandemic. We have served almost 14,000 meals that have been cooked, packaged, and delivered to seniors to encourage them to stay at home and shelter in place. And boy, let me tell you what a labor of love it has been. We have taken every precaution that we possibly can in terms of masks and gloves and washing and sanitizing and doing anything and everything we can to keep our, our seniors safe. At full well knowing that everything we touch could potentially cause, cause harm. So one thing we did to try to keep them safe is instead of delivering the meals on wheels to these folks every day like we normally do, we now are delivering it just twice a week. That way we have less exposure and contact with the seniors. We deliver on Monday. We deliver two meals for them for Monday, Tuesday. And then Wednesday, we deliver Wednesday, Thursday, Friday meals and frozen for the weekend if they so choose. So it's just been working out well. It's just, it's just amazing when you see all the sacks and all the meals and the packing of it all. And I, I think of the center and I know I'm a little bit jaded as far as I, I care about it deeply. But I just look at the last two years and I think of myself, it's the only accomplishments. This has been ongoing for at least the last eight years that I know that I've been on board. That we just have made, made some, come in the strides, served a lot of people with a lot of programs. But if you look at just the last two years and you think about, first off, the flooding and the fact that the center was the only Red Cross facility in the city of Yankton. And when all the electricity went out at Walnut Village and we had people that were well into their 80s and 90s that didn't have a home. And they all came over to the center, about 15 of them. Many of them were womb backs and machines that they had to plug in. That obviously they couldn't stay at Walnut Village because there was no electricity. And you see a 90-year-old man getting down on this cot that's like three feet, an army cot that's three feet from the floor. That's just, just a labor of love, just a service that no, no other entity in the community provided. Then the, you know, the following days and weeks to come, we had folks in there that lost everything from their mobile homes being washed away. So we had full families. We had people in there for about three weeks taking shelter until they were found a place to stay. So between that, and I would call that a tragedy, between that and now this pandemic, where we've been able to keep seniors in their homes, safe and sound, and keeping their nutrition, keeping their health well. Just those two ventures alone have just touched my heart. And I hope it has touched yours as far as being part of it. Because the county is a part of it, a very important part of it. Without your support, a lot of things wouldn't get done. And we're really, really grateful for that. So I just kind of want to talk about those, about what we're doing right now. We're just so proud. This year is the center's 50th anniversary. So our operation as of May has been around for 50 years. And of course, we want to have a grandiose celebration, but, you know, we're, our hands are tied right now. But just really proud of what we're doing, what we're accomplishing. And just thank you all for everything that you do. I know that dollars are hard to raise and, and you've got to look at, make some tough, tough decisions each and every year. I have to do the same in my operation. But I am, I'm just proud of what we've been able to provide to the community. And I'd love to answer any questions you might have about any of the bullet points on this list, even the services that we provide, what we're doing, anything further. A couple of other things we're doing is we're providing our commodities program still for seniors that are below the poverty level. They're still coming through our building. They don't come, nobody gets to come in the building. But they come to the building and we take out a big box of food and a lot of cheese. And we have about 100 people that participate in that. And I don't know how many statistics. I'm sure as a county, you look at statistics a lot and spreadsheets and charts. But when you're looking at poverty in Yankton County, I'm telling you, there's a lot of seniors that are dirt poor. There really, really are. It's not unusual for me to have the, not too long ago, a couple came in to me wanting to get commodities in their home. They were worried about whether they would qualify or not. And between the two of them, they were living on $750 a month. I mean, how, how do you do that? And I see that a lot. And one of the things since COVID has occurred that we really seen an increase in is the number of meals that people have not been able to afford. Because I mean, if you think about it for a minute, if you're looking at ground beef, let's just say, we're serving 14,000 meals, just something on the side of us. And you look at ground beef and you used to pay $2 a pound and now it's $5 or $6. You know, how, how, how they make ends meet? So we've been seeing a lot less donations from them as far as paying for their meals. So just since COVID, we've been averaging somewhere between $2,400 to $2,800 for the free meals we have been donating every month. So that's increased.
Kristi, and you, you guys don't turn away anybody and seniors who need a meal. And I know from working with you, these meals, sometimes that's, that's the only nutritious meal that those individuals get during the day. And it's really the highlight of a lot of the day, especially now when they can't get out as much as they can.
Well, it is. And I love that you brought up that point, Dan. Because last month, Dan was so courageous to be in our cop out in the parking lot directing traffic. Because believe it or not, last, before Wednesday of last month, so it'll be tomorrow, right? Tomorrow night, you're going to be my traffic cop?
Yeah, you gotta call ahead.
Gee, you're gonna be my promoter too? All right. You're hired. No, we, we had 277 people drove through our, our parking lot and received a delicious hot ribs meal last month. And right now, on the way to stand, we have about 245 reservations for tomorrow night. So we're making an extreme impact on this community and on this county. And I just hope you all understand and know the value of what the center brings to the county and the community.
Kristi, I come there just occasionally. I have to tell you the story because this lady came up to me, she's gone on, but she said, I remember you, we worked together at JCPenney's in 1964. You were in high school, working in the basement. I was upstairs. And temperament was really good. And of course, I knew her face. I just couldn't change her. It's such a social gathering too. I'm sure they miss that.
Well, you know, that's just, just such a slippery slope. Because, you know, the three aspects of what we do is recreation, nutrition, and socialization. And we had a board meeting Monday. Dan was nice enough to sit in on that meeting. And it's just a tough decision, you know? When do you open up your doors? When you've got a market that is at high risk? Certainly it's not a decision that I want to make. If just even one person gets sick, possibly dies, that's tough. That's really, really tough. So we're taking baby steps. We're being very cautious. But always understand that these folks are totally missing that socialization piece of what we have to offer. They really are. And it's just tough. But at this point, my bottom line is I want to keep everybody safe and I want to keep them healthy. And the way we do that is by giving nutrition and providing them a good meal and hopefully encouraging them to shelter at home as much as they possibly can.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for having me. Ambulance report, item 12.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are we? Hope everyone's safe. And is the department busy over the last three months?
They're pushing towards it.
That's right. Okay, sorry. I didn't thought it was a squeal. So, okay, so anyhow, it was part of a bit early busy over the last three months. We've got, we've been kind of slowed down during the peak of COVID, you know, scare. But right now, we're, we're looking at like probably six calls a day. About 132 we had already today, or this, this month already, excuse me. We are able to, we're keeping up with our PPE between the state and our winters. We're able to keep up with the BPA and kind of hands off to, you know, hats off to Paul, who has been kind of the keeper of the PPE, kind of the go-to guy. He kind of gathers it up from the state and disseminates it out. So that was something he did have to do, but it was very helpful. Oh, we did, Q and C took over on June 10th. They took over our bills. They started filling, they kind of went back and then requested vapor. So they had a good chunk of calls to start pushing through, finding the hiccups and hurdles that we had to jump through as far as all the insurance connections and, and electronic submissions, how we were sending them our reports and all that, trying to get that all connected. As of the end of, the end of June, when they, because they only had that recount for about three weeks, they ended up filling out $130,000. So if you go back to the very last document that said, it's a report, one of many reports that Q and C gave, because there wasn't a whole lot of data on the other reports because it was such short kind of timeframe. But I gave, I pulled this one and submitted it because it kind of talks about, it's an agey report. It talked about each individual insurance company, where those, how much is owed, where they are in the age, overall aging. And if you get down about four from the bottom, talks about the private, private pays, how much that is for that period of time. It's talking, you know, you look, you can see across the shields, Medicare, Medicaid, across the Medicaid, how much money is actually out there looking. So I kind of like that. I like that report. I like, and there'll be other reports that would like, but they gotta have some data in them to be able to see what they really are.
So Steve, how is that going with that new billing service? Are you happy with it?
I'm very happy with it, yeah. It just, we meet, well, we meet every week with, with our program coordinator, if you will. So we meet every week on the, on via Zoom and just kind of keep pushing through the little hiccups and hurdles that, that we're having when it comes to getting all that data and all that connection going. They did say that all of our accounts now, which are up there dry can or something like that, are all in process of being paid. So they're, everything is, is out. Everything that paid out is, is out. It's out there and working through the connection. We have received about $1,000 from them so far, but we haven't got the Medicare. Medicaid, that's taking a little time to put that routing to take place. And with this COVID-19 slowdown, everything's really slow. So we, we were, we had gotten, we received today insurance from March, which is unusual. That's usually, it's usually a six to, or four to six week turnaround. Now it's, you know, it's now it's three months before we get through it. But I think, and then I'll stop talking, but I think. But I think, maybe I'll stop talking, but I think in the next few months, we'll really start seeing four weeks, I'm more really starting to want to know.
Yes, I'm, I'm looking at the, the numbers for, on the first page, billed in January, and the bill in, in May, June, and it looks like there's a lot more pickups from January to June, pickups increasing, and I guess, um, how come the billing isn't increasing on that?
You mean the May-June, and that first column was just billed?
Yeah.
That's that, um, that's the Q and C transition, uh, that's that, where we, where what we did is we decided, they took over June camp, we decided to stop processing bills on May, starting May one, so they have a whole month of bills to start.
Okay.
That makes sense, cause I was a little bit of.
It didn't make sense, because the, the number of pickups is increasing and the number.
Right, I think as the months go, we're gonna start seeing that really, uh, even out, there'd be a better, better representation. It's gonna take a couple of months or, you know, six months or hell, whatever it's long, see that, that trend, trend out.
Too, too soon to tell now.
Yeah.
Any questions for Steve?
I have the approval of the ambulance report.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second to approve the ambulance report for the discussion. All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries, ambulance report is approved.
I'm gonna tell you guys, stay cool, hydrated, masks on, wash your hands, hold that. You ready, Cor?
Uh, yes, go ahead, come on up, I'm sorry.
Alright, so this is the second quarter report time. Uh, you know, of course, April was slower, because we had kind of semi shut down there, just the gates closed, and that slowed things down some. But May and June were really good, July's been really good, so uh, things are really, comes back as far as one office in terms of economic activity. As you see, uh, for instance, in April, we had just four point five million dollars in real estate changed hands, was sold. And in, beginning June, twelve point six million each month, so you could see that was a nice jump, and that was a good helping number, I was glad it was over ten million. July's gonna be over ten million. I think we still have prospects for a pretty good year as far as our revenue and just general services, but it's pretty amazing considering. Yeah, I mean, we did have some business, obviously, with our gate closing, we found a way to get ahold of people, there's no doubt that somehow we held things on, over, I mean, this person. We get a lot of email and regular phone calls, yes, so it takes to do. Counter traffic was a change.
A shotgun wedding spot on?
I don't believe it's a key cabinet.
There's a lot of people that are just saying, we're allowing, we can't have the big, the big ceremony, we're just doing.
Yeah, we're seeing a lot of, uh, mortgage activity, obviously, with the, with the low interest rates. We're seeing a lot of loans getting paid off, and then they take out a new loan, they basically start refinancing at a lower rate. Really see that, I don't think I broke a thousand month, that much for you, but in uh, May, for instance, we had uh, seventy-nine mortgages, and June we had a hundred and fourteen. And in May, we had fifty-five loans paid off, in June we had a hundred and eleven, so we're really starting to see that low interest rate, at uh, at least the recent three quarters. Of course, you have new, new house sales also, just like you said, twelve point six million, that's a hundred houses that were sold. Any questions for me?
I don't think so.
Still working okay up there, processing.
Yeah, yeah, real good, you know, it's got to do with a little different, we actually are all wearing masks every day, all day. Anybody that comes into doors, probably you don't have to have one, starting with doors. That's been going good, we're, it's a little uncomfortable, but you get used to it after a while, right? Believe it, you believe it. That was a school board meeting last weekend, of course I had to give my two cents, you know? I, I said I think masks should be mandatory when they start in school here. I don't think we should not be at school, but I think the mask should be required. Let's see if they listen, we'll get a vote a week or two.
I think tomorrow they'll state the site's activities.
Yeah, I think it's around the, optional limits, and again, I, I don't agree with that.
We'll see where they come out. Well, there are no more questions for Mr. Hanhoff, I entertain a motion to approve his report.
Wait, sorry, please.
I have a motion in a second to approve the register of these reports for the discussion. All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries, reports are approved, thank you, sir.
I was wondering, boring, about one number, can't tell you both the stuff that's interesting to everyone. But anyway, but this guy writes in our, our sheriff's fees for the last quarter. We're running about people the last year, they're twelve, about sixty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Uh, jail income, even with the COVID, uh, I guess it's good, we, we maybe have another dollar, or a half a dollar. Although that's a four hundred thousand dollars less than we took last year this time, but we don't have, I mean, we have capacity for a hundred and thirty, but we only have the capacity to isolate twelve at a time, so that would stretch, that's wrong. Additional, twelve to two weeks separated.
Separated, new?
Anybody, anybody that's coming in is isolated for a period of time, or the general population. That's, you know, the, the Yankton County jail, it's a government-style, hot system, we don't have a lot of isolation cells. That's, that's what stops us from being able to bring, bring more. And of course, we gotta take care of the local prisoners, and those, and bring everybody else.
Any questions on that?
Dan, did you hear this, Eric?
One other thing, just for your information, and I talked to you before about the whole building system, you can clean in there, uh, you can imagine, these companies are really busy, and we're looking at, called Global Plasma Solutions, they do a lot of federal buildings, uh, all over the world. Uh, they have representatives, all self, total counter companies, they're the H-Bat company, I guess. Hopefully, they're gonna get here within next week or so, just take a look, give us estimates, I don't know. When they come to the public safety center, I think it'd be live, you just will have them look at the government center and, and building, uh, this equipment they use apparently has been approved by the government, so, so.
You know, that's sheer, like, public, it's a, basically sterilization.
It's called finanization, and, and they're the big, reading the literature, the, the latest, it does destroy, during COVID plus six, all of these other captains. Uh, that year round, especially in a jail setting, you know, would, you know, flatter.
You wanna take a look too, they have a second. You guys determine whether it's something, or something, the way it sounds, it is not, not cheap, but it's not extremely expensive either.
On the pair, I just don't think.
That's, that, yes.
And that is something that just uh, goes into the central, the H-Bat system, so.
The H-Bats, it's absolutely, I do, the whole court, it's our sheriff's office, you know, everybody was housing the building, right?
Does it miss building at the end of the office? Which is, sounds good.
Any other questions for the sheriff? Right?
Go through all of the support, second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the sheriff's quarterly report for the discussion. All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One up, Matt, you're next.
Good evening. Um, I'm looking at the service side, our uh, the contacts throughout the first half of the year was down about nine point nine percent. That is less than a hundred, uh, visits of the same period last year. And I think that's pretty fair, considering that March, April, and May, um, and June were, were slow. But uh, we're gonna bring all that. Our riders were, were down to two riders in the last three months, we took two trips. Uh, our, our drivers are, are, um, kind of making a bit of a comeback. Uh, I have several of them that chose not to drive the van, and I can't argue with that much at all. We cannot provide a six-foot space in that van, and uh, I'm looking at this, just as we do when it comes time for bad weather and, and the winter. If the driver feels it's unsafe, I won't make people out, that, that's just it. And uh, the folks that are riding with us, they understand that, they know that they're gonna have to wear a mask if they ride with us. Uh, there's a protocol now that the VA, VA, uh, van folks have, where I will disinfect the vehicle every time choose. Uh, we're looking to get people safe ride up there, and uh, and we're not gonna, um, abuse our riders' jobs. Um, I would point out too, that I, now, last time I came here, I did not have the GDX, uh, statistics from the VA, and I presented them to you in mid, uh, in the midterm of this last three months. Uh, for those of you that missed out on that, this past year, Yankton County received five million three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in compensation. That was, uh, that's pretty helpful chunk of money. Uh, the year before, we received four million two hundred and eighty-six thousand, so it was a one million one hundred thousand dollar difference. And that was in compensation that gets into the hands of, of our veterans in Yankton County. Um, for those of you who are at budget, uh, eating full expenditures in Yankton County by the VA, from the time that I started to now increased twenty-six point three percent. Our veterans' population decreased twenty-three point three four percent. So veterans' compensation per veteran in Yankton County, from the time I started in, that's in two thousand thirteen and fourteen, two thousand fourteen up till now, um, the compensation increase per veteran is up to sixty-two point four seven percent. Uh, the, um, medical expenditures that were accrued and just clear, uh, two thousand, or calendar year two thousand eighteen, uh, were ten million eighty-seven thou, eighty-seven thousand dollars in comparison to this past year, uh, in twenty nineteen, we had twelve hundred and two hundred, twenty-two thousand. An increase of, uh, three million two hundred thousand dollars. So, we're, we're doing very, very good money to help our veterans. Other than that, I don't know if you might wanna talk, talk to you about.
It's like, uh, you that I know, the twenty-two veterans from twenty, commit suicide every day, limited perspective, that's about eight thousand veterans per year. Has the government come up with any programs recently?
There's no kinds of programs, the biggest problem is, is that we have, we have, you guys said, a very proud, you know, the service and ladies. And some of them, um, will tell you when they come back that they don't have a problem, and they do. And there's, there's a stigma behind it, and we gotta, we gotta rid ourselves of that, that kind of stuff. Um, it's, it's like, uh, I had a veteran call me from, from West River, a young fellow Marine, who was pretty upset about the fact that he had a bad paper, that paper discharge, that bad conduct discharge. And his dad was a, was a serviceman, and he was causing some problems at home, you know, with family. And uh, sometimes we have to remind people, like in the case of this young Marine, uh, I told him, I says, you know, you can, you can file for a, another discharge. I said, what you need to, what you need to do is contact Marine Corps, if you want, if you want to get a change in your discharge, and then you ask, you ask the Marine for, take a real good look at your service record. Because some of these young guys, they get in bad trouble, um, many of them have a TDI or PTSD issue that, that changed their behavior, they got their brain scrambled up a little bit, and they, and they, they started acting out. And, and from what I'm aware of, of certain individuals, uh, there's been a, a bit of a change of heart with some people in that they will, they will take that soldier's or sailor's service record that they will look at from the time up to the time that he had a TDI or PTSD incident, and that his service from the beginning to that point where he receives this injury, his service has been good in itself, and they're asking the, the branch to, to give him a discharge based on that, that service before he was injured, before he got his brain scrambled. And I think that's a problem. I think, I think we gotta get into, get into this thing with dealing with our soldiers and sailors and our airmen, and giving them a fair shake, because that's their, when they sign up, they said they were gonna give us a fair shake. So it's our, you know, the hierarchy, the, the VA, the Marine Corps, the Navy, the Army, the Coast Guard, all of us. We gotta get our stuff together and say, okay, you guys give us a good shake, up until that incident, we're gonna give you a good take. We're gonna get you, we're gonna get you the help that you need from the VA or whatever. And some of that has to be peer pressure from the folks in home, and uh, hopefully, you know, we get, we get more and more on the line.
That's real, real tough for those guys too, that, that is on discharge, because they, now with eligibility.
Yeah, they, they can't give VA help.
You know, I know, I know, uh, one of the best soldiers I had in Iraq, I mean, I got home, couldn't handle gas in my, best guy overseas. Couldn't be able to move on that, yeah, yesterday.
Never mind. Um, but, but with the suicide issue, um, you guys that run into that situation at home, in their own life, um, the pressures build up a lot. Um, it, it, it's something that we gotta, we gotta work harder on. And there, there are vet centers, we have a very fine vet center up in Sioux Falls, where we have some very good counseling there that's free of charge. Um, Dr. Penn, he's a, a VA, retired VA, um, he knows what, he knows what's going down. The guys that are working as counselors there are, are prior service guys that went, went through that kind of crap, you know, that, that listens, listens to fellow, or been around it, or they handled it themselves. Um, it's, they're, they're gonna listen, they, they've been, they've, they've seen, they've seen the same things that these guys have experienced. So, uh, if you have local people that are watching this on the cable TV and stuff like that, if you've got issues with your, your time in service in Southwest Asia, um, you know, get ahold of me. Get ahold of, uh, David Cotton at the Vet Center in Sioux Falls. Uh, if you get ahold of me, I'll give you his number. So, um, you know, don't, don't try to do this by yourself if it's eating your, if it's eating your guts and your brains up. Uh, you know, you can get help.
So I had something, I've got a real close friend, thirteen months in country, and he still has nightmares yet today from six nineteen sixty-six. And, but he told me one day, he says, I can't imagine some of these guys being deployed two, three, four, five, six. One guy was nine times deployed to Iraq and Afghanistan. So like, I, I, he said thirteen months for me was, was nightmares forever, but these guys, they just keep sitting on their back.
I don't want to say, if they need help, um, don't be bashful. Contact, contact the VSO, contact the VA. When you call the VA in Sioux Falls, one other question, it's an automated response, and they ask if you, if you are having, uh, mental difficulties, uh, to, to get ahold of their talk line. Um, the talk line will, will try to help you out as best they can, but, but, uh, in, in, in light of what I said earlier, if you wanna talk to somebody local, you know, a guy from South Dakota, a guy who's, who's got it just like you have, uh, get ahold of me. I'll get you in touch with Dr. Cotton, and he's got staff there, they're good, they're good people, and they'll try to help you.
And that's the problem, Mike, the guys don't wanna talk to somebody on the phone and get their name documented and put on a list that.
A lot of guys are afraid they're gonna lose their guns.
That's one of them, but a lot of them think they'll get locked up, and, and so they'll rather talk to another veteran.
Yeah, a lot of guys think they're gonna lose their, their right to hunt.
Yeah.
And that, and there's other stigma, like with, with family, prior service. Um, there's a lot of different things that, that this, this adds up to. But the bottom line is, if you need help, come on, let's, let's, let's give you some help.
And I think you get a report from the Inspector General, and, uh, there was a veteran in Florida, this was a few years ago, but he was so disgusted with everything that went on, and I don't know all the details, but he sat on the front steps of the Florida VA Hospital, and he killed himself with a forty-five automatic, and had a note that said, is this gonna get your attention? But, you know, this has happened, this happens all the time.
What's your phone number? Oh, my phone number here at, with the county is area code six oh five, two six zero, four four two zero. Once again, two six zero, four four, two zero. And I'm here nine until noon every day and one to five every day, Monday to Friday, unless I'm going off to something. Oh, and that's the other thing I wanted to tell you too, almost slipped my mind. I will not be going for the state certification school this year. And the reason behind that is mostly because of, of the, uh, social activities that are going to be, uh, uh, done here in South Dakota and all this. Uh, we have the Sturgis Bike Rally coming up, uh, we might see any anniversary. Uh, we might not see five hundred thousand people here, but we might sure see half of that. Two hundred fifty thousand people coming into the state, uh, especially when you take a look at the Southwest, um, and, and the, and the problems they have with the COVID. Uh, Sturgis Rally is, is two weeks before our state schools. That's the two weeks of incubation that could probably affect that, that, uh, that state certification school. Now, my wife works at an assisted living facility, so I'm not taking that chance. Uh, I don't want, I don't want anybody suffering because I went to a school that, uh, that, um, I've been doing this stuff for six or seven years. I'll have to take the test, and I'll have to go through some new material, but I can do that on my own. And I just don't wanna take the risk of, of hurting somebody, uh, in school.
I agree. Any other questions for Matt? Thank you.
Okay, have a nice evening.
Thank you. I need a personal official by veteran service report.
I have a motion to approve the veteran service report.
Okay.
Uh, well, Dan made the motion. Would you like to say it? All right, here in seconds. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries. Veteran service report is approved. Next on the agenda, item sixteen, welfare. One up Jennifer.
Um, I'm a welfare, I just want to move a mic if you. There were six applications, fourteen requests for hospitalization, no request for payments, and one of the, the price bill. For any getting medical attention. I was gonna be doing update on the context of that. For ten quarter, we had two hundred and sixty-two households, maybe a household. That we were able to get food to. First, almost, and for two, thank you to the commission for allowing us to stay open. We took home hauls, some folks that needed food, and we're looking to pick it up to the back of the ward, which was before we got our, our cell with a number mask. It seemed to get work very well for us and all of us. It was a lot of, lots of people didn't know that we were open, but once the news hit. Now with the, with the last, we are a simple business, we slide food under the powder, and we're able to take applications for people that are needing rent, um, which was seventy-two households this last quarter.
Is there an increase in people waiting for, uh, food or anything like that, or is it stable?
So much food and rent utilities. Six people needed medications, um, you know, we're in our paddles. That would be a lot of our medication, when somebody needs medication. But that was only three hundred dollars in, don't be biased, which, uh, you know, that much, but medication is not cheap, and if you don't have any insurance. But twenty-six hundred and eighty-five dollars for rent, which was thirty-nine, so that was eleven hundred dollars for utilities. Um. It, it was, March and April were really, were real strange for us, but now we brought our door open, so nobody's using it. And we know the lighting on the whole, the traffic, that's everything, and it's Tuesday, so we found the truckload of women so that it's kind of steady for me to try to go up and get out there and roll that. But I wanted to tell you all a little bit about the context of that. One, you. The context of opening these doors and letting people in, thanks to Yankee County, the many churches, many groups, many, many, many individuals, many of the lonely church ladies started the contact center. It started as a group charter, but we're trending, and it's to the full four thousand. Um, we, and down at the contact center, we're representatives for eighty-five to ninety-five, that fluctuates individuals. It's also clearly that these folks are unable to handle their own financials. We do charge us, us, we, and in much of that service. Those last three months have been very interesting because the people that you do serve, most of them have a mental disability. They weren't seeing their case managers face to face as much as they normally did. They want their grocery store, Walmart, they weren't making their food. They needed some to talk to, at least, and, um, time on the phone, especially more to be able to much better now. Um, we set a budget for them to pay their bills, make sure that they have money, send them a way promotion and personal items. Put their rent, utilities, whatever is paid over the month. We work with landlords, utility companies to ensure that anything is taken into care of. Every year since I'm here, we have a foster food drive and a foster food, foster food drive. Foster food drive, they happen last year around eleven thousand pounds. We were, we're doors, we sorted them further away, and they were there. They, they were kind of shooting for September. It doesn't sound like it's gonna happen. The foster food drive is in October, that's a, that's a, that's a lot of handling, about one or two. We've never paid a foster food, probably five thousand pounds, but we've been, guys, it hasn't been very intense, so that, yeah, that's gonna be interesting. Um, we do pick up, pick up board by the Tuesday, on ID, it's just down the hall, could be the state, as indeed. Um, the schools are really good at donation. I mean, if you know the street available, they, they have different food drives, they make it a game, gift cards, partying, they get to whatever with the teacher, I don't, you know, different things that go on. Our grocery store is very, very, very good to us. They deliver our food, so that was super fresh in the heart. They bring it, it's all, it's still packaged, it's nothing to remember, which is important, taking any food that's from outside for its one, one and a half. We're also a self salvation army for Yankee. Um, we, round of volunteers that are scheduled for the November, and ninety percent of that money stays in the, in the city. We visit for hotels, individuals, the police will help them, or the private night. If, if they need the requirements, please come up, go in and go to self salvation. We also case some community health and anguish, utility bills. Individuals, we have to use anything from that.
What example is this?
Um, so, um, almost eight hundred dollars for a bill that had been shut off.
Oh, so, so not a one month thing, but.
It was like two months, and. Anyways, it's, it seems, everybody's got the wrong story. Nobody knows when it's gonna fall off, but, um, two people in your home working, one person has to stay there with a child. They may not get paid for that day, except for the package to the car, they handed it forward, they hold it as possible. So, that's, we're an emergency system, we help with those emergencies. We hope to not be on the hook. We have seen some of the same faces, but we hope to not be on the hook. Um, I just put again, we also do the backpacks every year for free, free kitty for VA players. We have the backpacks downstairs, the police come and put out their own. I don't know if we may have that, sure, and then on the backpack. Um, at Christmas time, last year, we gave away, we put together and gave away two hundred and thirty-one baskets to individual families, complete meal. Along with a gift card, and you're donating, pick one from, I don't know who this person. For ID, um, every word out of those, which was helpful, pick up something that they didn't have in the food basket. We also delivered a hundred and forty-five food baskets to area, um, folks that are in, that are homebound. Knights of Columbus, King of the Dolls, and a couple, a couple of young groups, young people that wear those. We got several thank you cards in the mail from those people. It was meat, cheese, fruit, crackers, that kind of thing. They were definitely a number. That number seems about the same answer to food basket. The backpacks on, um, the family needs to be on snap address. If that stays the Christmas baskets, wasn't, yes, somebody that needs to sign up, is welcome to sign up. So I just, I wanted to, you know, some, a couple have been down, but it's an interesting day-to-day operation, and it's really the same story.
Thank you, for, thank you.
Thanks a lot. And thanks again to Samuel for us. It meant a lot to a lot of people.
Do approval of the welfare quarterly report and the context.
I have a motion and a second to approve the welfare quarterly reports for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay? Motion carries. Next item, number seventeen, Mr. Better, planning commission vacancy.
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that, uh, we're losing Greg Hansen from the planning commission. Uh, he's moving away from the community, so, um, I'll be advertising to fill his position for his last two years. I just didn't know how long you want to, or how fast you want to, to, to do the vote to be the absence.
Well, we, whatever we do, we won't make it obvious.
We'd be pretty sure if we just do.
So if we target to have some of mine in first, the September meetings?
Yeah, I feel that way, we do.
Okay, first meeting in September, we decide, and then I'll take office for planning.
Sounds either perfect.
You want a motion for that, to share, to advertise, to have somebody fill in?
It's a budget, and, you know, we should be fine there.
Wonderful, thank you.
We think for his service last week does we have the meeting, so.
Item number eighteen is a, a plat for Lot Seven Bay Cliff Estates.
Yes, Lot Seven Lake, Bay Cliff Estates, located in the west half of the south, twelve point nine one acres of the south half of the southwest of Section Seven, and in the west half of the west half of Section Eighteen, lying north of Highway Fifty-two, except planted areas known as Trance Seventh Edition, and except lots one and two of parcel eight, and further excepting parcel D and C, McVeigh Edition, all in, all being attached at ninety-three north, range fifty-six west. Uh, planning commission recommends approval.
Do approval of the plat, sorry.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Lot Seven Bay Cliff Estates plat. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay? Motion carries. So we have removed nineteen, so we are now at item twenty, plats for lots one and two. Is it PYN or EYN addition?
High, high addition. And this was in the southwest corner, the southeast corner of Section Eight, attached at ninety-five north, range fifty-four west. Planning commission recommends approval.
Are there any questions?
Approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve lots one and two in the fine edition. Further discussion. Further discussion. We will, she asked her twenty-first, that's great. There may be no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries, fine edition plat is approved. Skipping, uh, item twenty-one, moving to twenty-two. A plat for Kasich edition.
A replat of Kaufman track two, except for Schmidt edition, lot one of Kaufman track twos and that portion of Kaufman, Kaufman track one, all being in the north half of the northeast quarter of sections fifteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west. Now to be known as Kasich edition in the north half of the northeast quarter of section fifteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west. Planning commission recommends approval.
Any discussion?
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion in the second to approve the plat for the Kasich edition, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries. And item number twenty-three, lot twenty Bay Cliff Estates plat.
This one located in the west half of the south, twelve point nine one acres of the south half, the southwest quarter of section seven and in the west half, the west half of section eighteen, lying north of highway fifty-two, except planted areas known as Trant seventh edition and except lots one and two parcel A and further accepting parcels B and C McBay edition, all being in Talchad ninety-three north, range fifty-six west. Planning commission recommends approval.
Any discussion? We're not in a motion.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion in the second to approve the lot twenty Bay Cliff Estates plat. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries, plat is approved. Thank you. Thank you.
And Gary, are, are subdivision ordinance is now in effect, correct?
That is correct, and it's on the website.
All right, we are now at item number twenty-four, public comment. Would anyone care to make a public comment?
Is Gary on the list?
That was, so. All right, public comment is closed and we are at commissioner updates, item number twenty-five. Anyone wanna start?
I guess, I can start?
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I got a email from, uh, they're doing, uh, the states doing the cable training and, you know, and some of the planning commissioners have expressed an interest in attending. I guess, from what I understand, where they're paying the registration fee and mileage. I don't have an issue with that. I mean, I've been there, done, seen there, sharing. It's, it's good training for these guys to go to and I think if people wanna do it, that's a good thing. Is there any issue?
No, not at all, they need to go.
So I will, anybody will send that out to the planning commission and I know at least a couple. That's all I have.
Nope. Dan?
Uh, yeah, I've got another conference call tomorrow, it's a national, I was, I was reading a call tomorrow. And so, I'm trying to leave this. I had one, two weeks ago also, a lot of guests, speakers there, very comfortable, was there, speaking last night. Uh, the day before, Secretary Agriculture, Sonny, you know, Sonny, Sonny, I met Sonny when I was on in Washington DC. Anyway, uh, that's, that's what's going on.
All right, we have a budget meeting tomorrow morning at nine. Everybody good for that?
Yes.
So over the final and then Penny will be able to advertise that. I believe I saw in the newspaper an egg, gave a Friday evening?
Friday evening. Perfect.
At the art tree center and it's, it's not their normal sit down, more fancy one, this is more of a family friendly.
Is it the art tree center? Romeo Brown. I, I, I believe it's at the Romeo Browns, I mean, you're supposed to read that one here. That's what I had heard.
So.
It's on the end of the.
So anybody planning to attend, because we have more than three, we need to advertise.
I would, I'm going.
When is this Friday?
It's Friday. I know, I was trying to think which newspaper it was in.
It's Saturday.
There you go.
The Chamber of Commerce, so anybody have questions?
Yeah, it's probably on their website.
I should, I'll get it in tomorrow and shoot you the rest.
Okay.
I will not be able to attend that.
I might, so, there's a chance there will be a jury there. So I can't think of any other places we're all gonna be, uh, before our next meeting in August. All right.
My meeting, sorry, what time?
Nine o'clock.
Oh.
Yep, right for her. So with that, um, I have no other updates. Any items for next meeting? We will have the HR manual on there, he did request to be on the first meeting in August. Um, other than that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Ooh. Second.
I have a motion in the second to adjourn, further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned.